So, good evening. A call to order the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the city of Apache Junction. The date is Tuesday, February 8th, 2022. The time is now 7:00 PM. I invite you to stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Roll call. Rudy?
Commissioner Barker.
Here.
Commissioner Begum.
Here.
Commissioner Cantwell.
Here.
Vice Chair Hanchy.
Here.
Chairman Heck.
Here.
Commissioner Cross.
Here.
Commissioner Gage.
Here.
Seven members present. We have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration of approval for this evening's agenda along with the minutes from the meeting of November 23rd, 2021. Do you want to hear a motion to accept the agenda and the minutes?
Chair, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission accept the agenda as presented and approve the minutes from the November 23rd, 2021 regular meeting.
Second.
Very good. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Commissioner Gage.
Yes.
Commissioner Barker.
Yes.
Commissioner Begum.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantwell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hanchy.
Yes.
Chairman Heck.
Yes.
Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
So, move, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you. Right, there are no public hearings scheduled for this evening, and there is no all-business schedule for this evening, as there is no new business schedule for this evening. Information and reports. I don't know if anyone was going to remind the commission about the state-of-the-city presentation tomorrow evening. 6:30 PM reception, 7 o'clock program at the Performing Arts Center. Director's report. I'm Larry. Presentation and discussion of the city's GIS Viewer for development projects.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Two weeks ago, we were at the CLI, and we introduced folks to the Viewer, because I'm not sure. This was really developed a couple of years ago by the GIS department. Council members were asking, hey, what's going on here? What's going on there? So, as projects came in, so we meet with a lot of folks, and some things, they're just kicking tires. Other times, they're... They get started, but they don't get too far because the landowner doesn't sell, whatever the case may be. And so, once a formal application is made, even if it's for a preliminary review, or they're starting the process, we add them to this Viewer. So, one of the things that I believe was mailed to you was this... And we're going to do this in a couple of different ways, but it's really, there's so much happening at the city right now that I thought it would be beneficial for you all to see. This is some of the residential and commercial that's going on. I'm going to make this in a larger view. And then, we'll kind of do it on the... So, I think you have a better copy with the...
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Well, this is going to be okay. So, some of these are kind of ongoing. If it's something that's going to be... And Rudy will have to remind me, there's so many that some of these are... You're going to be seeing, so I really shouldn't go into too much detail on them, because you will be... I just wanted to show you the universe of activities. I know we haven't met really much at all in the new year. So, I thought it would be good to bring some of these up. So, and then, we'll... So, I didn't know if we did the total on here. It's... There's a staggering number of units that are being proposed right now.
Twenty-one eighty-nine.
Yeah. So, did you do the math?
Yep.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So, most of these are, except for the one project south of baseline in the Cortez alignment, so we have 256 units going in there. But we have kind of a constant flow of applications that are in various stages that you will be seeing, whether they be apartments. Some are as small as, you know, this one that's coming up is four... Three buildings with four in each. So, again, a lot of infill-type stuff is really what we're seeing. Some of these have already been approved. Some of them are just, they've made a formal application. So, these are not... The numbers on here aren't going to correspond to the aerial photo, by the way. They're just a list. And some of them, we've talked in general about. Some of them, you've recently approved, like Number 12 Keystone is on here, but it's... This is the one that's 256 units. This plat was approved almost two and a half years ago, but it's finally getting off the ground. Goldview is nearly completed. Hampton's is under construction. You'll see Ironwood Station is now under construction. Villas on Superstition is under construction. Some of these have already had their rezonings approved, so now, we're getting into the detail of more detailed site planning. Some of these where the zoning was approved, where now, they have to, you know, come back with a plat. So, I think there is the one that was Old West Highway Village. So, they had a rezoning, and now, they're... We're working on the pre-plat, so you'll see the plat come back, things like that.
Larry, can I ask a question?
You... It's up to the chair.
Chair?
I'm just kidding.
May I ask Larry a question?
Please. Yeah, please.
Thank you. What's with the 55-plus on the apartments? I thought we did away with that.
The 55...
That's nine. Number nine.
Number nine. Sunset. Oh, that is a low-income housing tax credit project that is run through the Arizona State Department of Housing. There's 15 acres. There's not a lot we can do about it. It already has RM2 zoning, so there wasn't a rezoning involved. But it is similar probably to Apache Junction Villas, where a certain percentages... Certain percentages, like 80% might be for 55 and over, and some might have some regular folks there. There might be some market rate, probably not here, but yeah, they didn't... There was nothing really we can do when someone already has the zoning. And then, what they do is they go to the state, they put in an application for low-income housing tax credit project. There's so much, the state is a lot to this. I think these are... There's two different types of federal tax credits. So, they basically get in line at the state. The state says, okay, these, I believe, are the 9% federal tax credits. So, we weren't too excited about the layout. We thought 94... You know, you see, I don't know, here's 200 units. If you're going to use land, there's 200 units on 17 acres. Here, 94 units on 15 acres. So, we thought, well, yeah, it's kind of low-density, but because it already had the RM2 zoning, and it is still within the downtown, we thought it could have a higher density. But there now, they don't need zoning, they're just coming in for design review.
I'm surprised it's that low a density for low income.
Well, there's... Yeah, there's a bunch of, I think, four or six-unit buildings. So, it's kind of this scattered-site, six-unit product. On the... This is pretty much Popeyes is ready to go. We're seeing a lot of infill on some of these corners, gas stations. We got a couple auto zones that are being proposed that are... Essentially, they have their zoning, so you guys won't see them until, you know, you'll see a building going up, and you'll go, what the heck's that all about? That's kind of why I wanted to do this tonight, too. This one is coming up for rezoning on the old county jail site, which was also a county or a... I think it was a facility for severely mentally ill.
Okay. Right across from the...
Yeah.
Where the train place is.
Yeah. This is the CUP that came here already, so now, they're in design review, the wedding venue. Francis &amp; Sons next to Dutch Bros. Again, that already has the zoning. Dr. Kumar is kind of plating that development that he already did, so you'll see that. Another second auto zone, which is, this is next to the old Kmart, kind of behind the Wells Fargo on Apache Trail. So, it's where the Sunshine Acres now has their thrift center. So, that's been a site that doesn't have a lot of visibility. So, one of these, though, I believe, is more of a... So, maybe one's not going to go. I don't know. But we already have an auto zone in town, and now, we have two proposed. So, one might close down, and we usually sometimes don't get the whole story as to what's happening. But we have... This has been... This was annexed to the city, the southeast corner, about seven acres, I believe. And there is talk of a hotel, a commercial... So, they've kind of given us a tentative site plan. That's kind of where we're at that stage, so that's kind of our process.
Is that where the campground was proposed?
No.
No?
No. This was...
Across from Horn.
This is across from Horn Ford. There's still multifamily in there, and it's been...
Yeah.
But it was annexed, and we prohibited a bunch of uses, so there's kind of a concept plan for... Kind of a mixed-use project, which might not be too bad. Warehouse &amp; Motorsports. This is one that kind of came and went and came back. We thought it wasn't going anywhere, and all of a sudden, eight months later, you hear from folks again. So, that is that quick snapshot. I did pull up the... This. So, are people familiar with this Viewer?
This is handy.
I don't...
Yeah. So, this, you know, we could go through these simply. This is one where we say it's approved, so they're just getting started moving dirt down there. This was Americana that went away at least five years ago, four years ago. They were going to... There was a project, I forget if it needed a rezoning, Rudy. Wasn't the zoning?
They got a rezoning for a big...
Big... There was a big...
Playground equipment type of manufacturer.
Yeah. Then, there was kind of tariffs on aluminum and kind of stopped the whole project, and so... This is that one I just talked about, if I can zoom in. Yeah. Go away. So, yeah, if you click on these that have already the information on it and who the staff planner is and all that.
So, was that one used to be part of the County Island, and it got annexed?
Yeah, it got annexed like about seven years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, it has access, some access issues there. Don't get dizzy, I'm going to be zooming in and out here. So, this is... We have a proposal for this land south of Goldfield that is mostly zone RSGR and some B1 commercial. There was a gas station that was approved here a long time ago that may come again. Some of these... This is the wedding venue. This is a new project, Villas on Acacia. I'm pretty good at this, huh?
Well, it's nice that when you click on it, you can see the actual layout.
Yeah. Now, it's kind of...
If they have it, yeah.
Let me see if it... Might have to go back in.
Click on the gray bar.
This one?
No, I just like...
Here? Thanks for being here, Nick.
Wrong map. Yeah.
Campground USA, we have a very early proposal for a hotel here. That one is already zoned, so you won't necessarily be seeing it, but we are kind of... Hopefully, I think our comments just came out or going out this week. We're not super excited about it, but it's not a conventional hotel that's going to cater to the RV crowd, and they're not telling...
It's been around for a long time, hasn't it?
Pardon me?
That's been around for a long time, hasn't it?
No, this is a new... Campground USA is now here.
Oh, maybe they... Oh, that's...
This is... This is about a year and a half old.
Okay.
And now, this was... At the council meetings, there was discussion about a Cracker Barrel and a hotel. Well, we're getting a hotel. But so far, so far, it's... They're not telling us a lot, but they're showing some RV sites with hookups that...
Which is what...
Plus the hotel, so we're saying...
Which is what they tried to get into the campground.
So, we're kind of pushing back pretty hard on that. This is this... This is the old Highway Village.
No, that's the... Auto Services thing that went away and then came back.
Right. Yeah. This is one that was approved, and we were waiting for a plat. This is a rezoning for over on 12th, and this is... Was the big junkyard that was over here for a long time. That's just kind of disappeared, but they have their zoning. We're working with Jim Gonzalez. He used to be over here on Superstition, kind of an excavating guy. And he's supposed to be building some sort of commercial building there. This is the one that was the driving range that's now going to be the townhomes. Got some plans that are coming in on this, still discussing that project that was rezoned. This is one of the auto zones that's next to this lovely water and ice kiosk, and that's auto zone number one. These are all done already, of course. This is the site for the '96 low-income housing tax project. So, they do a lot combo and some other things in here, because there's, I think, four parcels here, or one, two, three. I think there's four parcels. We got these projects that have already come in for apartments and some townhomes. Keystone, again, you're familiar with. Circle K, kind of, we heard from them, like they were going to remodel it, and then, kind of, quiet. This is an infill site, Circle Trail Suites, which again, is this single-family rental. So, they're kind of in... I think it's zone B1, so I don't... And I think they just need a conditional use permit.
Right.
Coyote Crossing, this is this little 12-lot subdivision. This is one that's coming in pending, this 94 West. It's just, it's a weird site that was kind of rezoned, and then, the owner's never sold, and now, it's going to be some sort of infill. So, it's a complex site, because there's some right-of-way in there and things. This is Superstition Apartments. Four acres. It's a rezoning, going to be a rezoning. This is the one that's under construction. This has been approved a long time ago. They were supposed to build some...
Some additional apartments.
Yeah. And that's...
We discussed, yeah.
Yeah. I don't think anything's happened. Villas on Superstition, under construction, kind of going in here. You'll see, this business park was approved, and now, it sounds like they aren't going to go forward. So, this was kind of a neat infill project between the back of the Safeway and this RV storage, and so, something else will come up. I think we have a proposal for a project here, but it hasn't advanced far enough. This is the auto zone two on... Between the Walmart. This is Aspen Dental on this corner by the Walmart. And this Axiom Health, you'll be seeing coming up there. Again, we got... This was part of VIP Park right here, and this, we ended up having to do a rezoning and make sure it was all one zoning, so that apparently facilitated that. You got Popeyes, you got this car wash that's going in here. We have a proposal kind of on an infill on a tough parcel here. That one's done. That one's built out. Arizona Water has finished up their project. This project kind of lingers. It's kind of an infill project, which I think was 20 units, I believe, on this corner.
Yeah. Few apartments, 10 or 12.
Apartments, yeah. 10 or 12. I think... I think that's kind of it. Any questions that Joel will allow us to answer, if you ask them? Again, I think if it's a pending case, I don't think we want to talk about it. It's going to be a future CUP or a... It's just more... Since it's public information, we put it out there. They've made an application, but ultimately, you'll get the packet, and you'll get to decide.
Larry, question. So, if they get zoning approval or whatever they're seeking, there is typically a timeframe when they have to take action. Yes?
There have been historically, in some cases, where they would have to do something within a period of time, or we might rezone it. The city typically never exercised those reverter... Again, it goes through a whole process all over again, so I would... I hate to use the word reverter, but it could go back to the previous zoning through a regular rezoning process. But I don't... Rudy, how many of those have we ever do in 32 years?
Very, very few. Because it's almost better to keep a plan, development plan in place than go back to GR or some old general commercial zoning district, which may have a wider palette of uses, some uses which may not be that desirable in a given area. So, but... The only things that do have kind of a hard and fast timing issue is once you approve a preliminary plat, then, I think a developer has like one year to submit the final plat, or else, the preliminary plat could expire. And so, those... The plats have more of a timing issue than the rezoning cases do, because we could initiate reversions, but it's never been advantageous to initiate reversions. It's just better to wait for a new plan.
So, here's a couple examples of that. I think this one here with this house, kind of in the middle, wasn't there a plan of approval on there, Rudy?
Yes.
That was a PD, so if the current zoning is... I don't know if it has the...
It was... I think it was like an RM2 PD. There was 25 standalone townhome units planned there about 10, 12 years ago, but Mr. Gozicki never got built. And now, some other folks are interested in doing a bigger project. So, basically, amending that plan plus incorporating some additional parcels into a different, larger development plan.
Got it. So, if a project kind of goes stale for a period of time, can another developer can come in and approach Development Services about that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And they may want to do the same project, but more often than not, they want to do something a little different.
Yep.
And this may be a good example where this is zoned B4, I believe?
B4 PD, yeah. That's where that little business park was going to go, and apparently, those folks have sold to somebody else, so unfortunately, doesn't look like we're going to get our business park. But as a matter of fact, today, some other folks were asking about that property.
But it is tied to an approved PD, so if they want to do something, they would have to come in and amend the PD, so we can kind of make sure it's better, but no worse than what we had already approved.
Got it. Okay. Have you heard anything more on the U-Haul site?
Yep. Yeah, the U-Haul, I don't know if it's still on the map here, but...
It's still...
Yeah.
It's still pending.
So, they've come in, they're getting closer. They had to do a lot combination after the rezoning, and there are some complications because one half of the right-of-way is state land, or one half of the future roadway is state land, and so, I believe we're now having some discussions about acquiring. So, we have the whole, I think it's 100-foot, 150-foot corridor. So, that has complicated a few things. But as far as, I think their building plans are pretty close to...
Yeah, they're pretty much proved, yeah.
Yeah. So, now, they're just trying to get water, sewer, because again, that's sparse in this area.
They're talking about acquiring that whole piece of property or just the alignment?
No. Well, they did. U-Haul bought all 80...
No, I mean, on the state land on the other side.
Oh, no, just enough for the right-of-way.
Right-of-way.
Yeah, to get the utilities in there. And they're not far. There's water.
Yeah.
Is that how I do it? There's water on baseline and sewer, of course, over there. So, it's just bringing it to the site and making sure it's in our right-of-way. So, it is...
Larry, they had... U-Haul had given us permission for our economic development folks to try and get... Get or develop some interest in that light industrials area below, south of them. Is that... Looks like that's never really developed. Hadn't they... Hadn't they...
Well, they had... Yeah, we've talked to various commercial realtor brokers over the last couple of years, where last time we heard, there was kind of a little race to see... We had like three different developers. We had a lot of calls, they want to put rental housing down there, and we say, we think we've got plenty of that. The current plan is this east half would be light industrial. That would be like a business park, maybe similar to the way this was, and to connect a road through here. And then, this would stake 30 acres of commercial. So, anybody that's talked to us about, you know, multifamily or residential, we've just said no. And then, we did have a couple... I thought there was supposed... Talking to a few prospective buyers that they were... We'll know within a week if we were the winning team, so they... I think U-Haul was entertaining or have in the past, but maybe they were just saying, well, they didn't like any of the proposals, so...
Now, if somebody wants a rezoning, they have to own the property, or they have to have a contract for the property? What's the step?
The owner has to sign the rezoning petition or application. So, if someone wants to do a rezoning, the owner of the property has to sign the application. So, yes, people will buy it generally subject to a rezoning. But yeah, we don't let an applicant who may buy the property do the rezoning. The owner always... Because they have to sign the 207 waiver, the diminution in value waiver required by state. So...
That's what I was assuming, just to make sure. Looks like a lot of the downtown area is getting filled in already.
Yes. Yeah, when you kind of zoom in and you look at the vacant lots, you know, there's this parcel here that's about 17 acres that the Ness family has owned, the old hotel site. We have had some interest in this eight acres that is along Roosevelt, West Roosevelt. We get calls occasionally on this one, but I'll turn the floodplain layer on, and you'll see why they don't go too much farther, because this whole front of this, of seven acres, is in the ponding area for a floodplain that's north of the Apache Trail. So, like, we've gotten proposals for RV storage, and we just kind of say no. So, over time, you know, something may happen with this now, because the gaming compact and the state law did not change, I guess, in their favors. They may decide to do something, who knows? They have this, not including the retention basin, but there's still a bit of land there that could be infill. I think there may be, I heard, Rudy, some interest about this land south of Dr. Evans that were here. We had the proposal for the...
Masonic Campus.
For the Masonic. I think... I don't know if they ever took their sign down, but they went through three architects, and maybe they were volunteers. They never really got a decent set of plans prepared, so I don't know where that went to. So, again, we like to... This really... Use this site for where someone makes a bona fide application, because we do talk to a lot of people, and then, the projects just go away, and then, there's some... So, I think most of these sites will get harder over time. I think most of this is owned by the high school now, but it'll be... For this area, it's once these infill, it's... It's almost in a redevelopment sense, anyway, that these sites, like Dutch Bros, they took down a bunch of buildings, redeveloped it. But there's clearly not a lot of... We've had some interest. This thing seemed to go away. You've probably noticed that this is now vacant, and you don't see a bunch of... So, there supposedly, somebody bought it. They have some housing, which I think we support more than this. Again, whether something comes to fruition or when, we can't tell you, but I guess that's the dynamics of a city and land use, is that it does continue to change over time. And again, some of these, they'll just, and maybe, but we won't go in too much detail, but like here's an example where maybe someone was holding out and they, it never developed. And like I said, maybe this person was holding out and now it happens. They think they're going to outsmart the developer, they're going to hold out till the price goes up and then they're left with a remnant. All right, so the last thing I wanted to do, handout wise, that I put together.
I guess you could call it a spreadsheet.
Your resume?
You want reference for you?
So this was kind of a tongue-in-cheek approach. Rudy might appreciate this more, he's been here 32 years. And it seems sometimes that you're always second-guessed, people are always looking over your shoulder. And so we've had a few projects where people didn't think that we had the wherewithal to get done. I won't go into specifics, but I do think that there's a lot of those top projects that were pretty complex, you know, thanks to Sydney, all the department heads, Rudy getting Joel in the general plan. We did get an award, honorable mention. The active transportation plan, we won a state award for that. Some of the projects that we did that really weren't even our department to work on, which was the solid waste thing. It was like, why is our department involved in working with ASU? But there was enough momentum to, people didn't realize we didn't have mandatory solid waste collection in the city. So the efforts that we worked with, with ASU led to the city having mandatory solid waste collection. So I think that's a big picture thing. We've updated a lot of codes and fees and impact fees now a couple times. We're the staff of the Arts Commission, and they're going to start working on the dog park art, the RFQ went out. The group here, Rudy and Sydney and company, worked on the 6,600 acres, Joel had a lot of time involved in that. A couple rezonings, you folks saw that. We're working, right now it's going to go to the council in April, is what are the fiscal impacts of that four square miles? What does it really mean to the city as these houses develop? What is the bottom line going to be? And does the city have to, you know, do an early or mid-course correction? But we really ought to know what, understand what the fiscal impact model is for that. So that's a study that we are working on. We just finished up hiring a contractor to do all the engineering review for the, those, we're trying to hire staff too, I mentioned that before. We've got seven staff we're recruiting for right now, and it's a very difficult recruiting market to do. Yeah, we've gone from, I think that really shouldn't be 11, I think it was like 12 or 13 to, you know, we're now on the org chart for 33 people. So it's, it's gotten different. And then going to the online permitting, we never really had online permitting, and so we've had it now for a year and a half, kind of at the end of the pandemic, and I think it's working well for, for most people. And then I listed these as just like, just how do you get there from here? You know, we put in the, in the general plan, a downtown master plan, and it, you know, I think there's interest in the community, but we did put some money in the budget, maybe not enough to get it started. So I think there's a little bit of inertia, you know, the city has had some successes in a downtown, but in my opinion, doesn't have a downtown master plan. And you're not really, the city, what's it going to look like 30 years from now if we don't have a, a vision for what it's going to be? So I'll leave that to the next folks. And in the general plan, we did note this 12 linear miles of conservation in the general plan as a land use, but I think as everybody should know, you know, the state could auction that off tomorrow. Not likely, because there's no sewer and water up there, but in general, people think, oh, that's our open space. We have 12 linear miles of open space. Well, no, we don't. We may have the BLM where the power lines are, but after that, this open space is not protected. So back in 2004, there was an open space committee and there's a report on it. And then there was money in the legislature to help cities go out and buy the land. And then it came to the council, that committee met, Rudy was part of that committee, Roger Hacker, and the council didn't do anything with it when it got here, and then the program, the monies went away from the state. So to me, you know, if the city wants to be something 25, 50 years from now, it ought to start thinking about how can we convince the public that they want to permanently protect that open space? So I think the ground rules are there, there's really no reason to redo some of the studies. There are some issues out there with archaeology and things like that, that, but the public ought to know that that land is not protected and it can be sold at auction. In fact, we had a, we met with somebody who, I don't know if that went away or not, Rudy, they want to go buy this. They want to go talk to the state, and we haven't heard anything lately, but again, I think that would galvanize the community, but you know, the city has to decide, you know, what the long-term goal is, you know. Scottsdale went and borrowed a billion dollars and put it on people's taxes to buy the McDowell Mountain Preserve. So is this important enough to the folks that live here and the folks that are in Pinell County, east of here? Is this buffer important to both county residents and city residents to? Okay, enough about that. Stormwater utility, I've been preaching this for seven and a half years, that the city has like a $20 million. We did a stormwater master plan and have never really implemented because there's no funding source for it. So we tend to talk about a water utility or sewer utility before we talk about a stormwater utility. And to me, the city ought to talk about all three. And then the rest are just a simple, or a list of, of things that have happened with the building department. You know, tenant improvements and there's a lot that's happened, I think, in the last few years. It was pretty quiet in 2014, 15, things started getting busy in 2016. And not all these projects were easy either. Some of them were, were pretty good, some of them we had to, you know, argue with folks that, hey, you really ought to have plans before you get a permit and remodel your whole business and then get a permit. So not all of them are easy, but I think it is a tribute to Dave Zellner and his staff and the building department and Rudy and, and his folks in the planning, along with the three outstanding people in the, in the back row there that were getting it done. And then I, I kind of, again, tongue-in-cheek, we have a lot of projects in play and that we could still screw them up. We haven't yet, I mean, we somehow approved 11,000 units and somehow built, we're told the fastest fries built. There, there was a fry somewhere in Texas, three years to get built and still wasn't built, and this fries here got built within 12 months. And then we heard, I think, at the groundbreaking for the, for the state land, the, one of the, the key players from Brookfield basically said, hey, we really underestimated AJ. I think people think we're a bunch of rum-dums out here. And they were, they will put us up against any city planning department in the state of Arizona. And again, that's a tribute to Rudy and, and the staff that we have here. So again, I think people just, they come out here and they think, you know, this is AJ from 1982. And in 1989, when Rudy got here, it all changed, right? Eighty seven, 89. So anyway, that's just a little bit of, kind of what has happened over the, if you're new to the commission and, you know, now you know there's a, we got a couple more, you know, when fries moved, you know, the building department, nobody knows all the stuff that the building department had to do to, to get goodwill in there and Ross and, and all that. So it is, you know, just a team effort from everybody, so. Any questions on, any projects or insights? So we have a lot more commercial, some of them are on that list you saw, or on the aerial, the commercial ones on the back page, so.
I will just make the comment, I've been involved, you know, my background is I've been on three different planning commissions in three different communities. And, you know, I have to compliment the planning department here because I think it has been by far the most professional of the three.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, may I tag on a little bit to what Larry said? Larry's very gracious in giving all the credit to staff, but it also takes one heck of a good leader to realize all of these things for our, for our city, and we're really going to miss Larry when he leaves us at the end of the month. And that said, Mr. Chairman, we do have cake in the lobby at the expense of embarrassing Larry just a little bit. We invite everybody, everybody to stay and have a little cake and celebrate Larry along with us.
Is there any beer out there? Because we got to have. That goes good with cake, that goes good with cake.
I guess my question is this, Larry, would this be your last?
I was trying to figure out, I know Joel wants to meet next, in two weeks, I'm trying to figure out a way to meet in two weeks, but the two major things that we're working on that are very important is, and we've talked about before, is putting out a request for proposals to redo the zoning code. There's a lot of, even though the council updated in 2014, you know, Rudy has worked with, you know, various versions of them. And even when you get a new code, you, and you work with it for a while, you find out where, you know, some of the things are. And there's a lot of things that, you know, frankly, we should have done three, four years ago, but we have been busy. So again, the sign code is out of whack with the Gilbert case. And I'd like to see our home, our group home, kind of make sure it meets the two federal acts and case law on fair housing and, and all that. So there are some, just some, some things too, like our dark sky, we've been working on that and maybe tightening up our dark sky regulation. So all of that is going to go in an RFP, some things I think city staff can be part of a team that works with a consulting firm to maybe get it done quicker. But again, the, with all these volumes of projects, I don't, there's really not an hour in the day that staff can say, oh, well, let's just peel off and work on the zoning code for a couple, four hours at a time. But again, that's what it took to get the building software up and running, which, you know, the planning and zoning software, the MyGov. Nick and Sydney worked, you know, a lot of Fridays and getting that up and the other staff, so. That's a top priority. I'm still working on, Darrell knows this, this layer doesn't have it. But I was just reading some minutes from September of 2016 where a council member was lamenting about the haphazard nature of how the city has gotten rid of federal patent easements and that people drive in circles around here because all these easements have been extinguished by the city and there's no rhyme or reason to why we do that. So I'm hoping as a parting gift to finish up, at least let the council decide. What are the criteria? We've already agreed on some things with Public Works, but we also differ in, you know, a vision or rationale. Again, I'm not saying theirs is not valid, but as planners, we're looking 50 years out. If we give up all these easements and 50 years from now, we'll be buying them back. Whereas Public Works, there's, the way the money comes through HERF, there's no, there's not enough money to maintain all these roads. So they just assume not see roads out here, but ultimately the city's going to grow up and if the city decides. So we've looked at a 2003 study, a 2012 study, our 2019 active transportation plan and try to come up with at least, give the council a chance to kind of set some direction for how we should or shouldn't. Again, some of these make sense, again, on the FPEs, we've kind of agreed, in principle, you can't have intersections coming in at weird angles. And so it might be okay to get rid of some of these, but again, that's kind of the final, those two projects, I think, are, you know, imminent in, in moving forward with getting some council discussion on what to do with FPEs and rewriting the zoning code. Again, that's, for you folks who were not around in 2014, that is typically a 12 to 18-month process of grueling meetings of going through the zoning code, so. I didn't shirk on it, I just, we didn't have time, so.
So Larry, where are you going to add 22 more staff to get to 33? Where, what are you going to?
Oh, we've already done that, we already have added. Yeah, we've added.
Nobody knows you.
Yeah, I don't recognize half the people in there. When, where'd you show up? Where'd you come from? The, again, we haven't, we're, we're going out right now for three building inspectors, we picked up one already. We know that in about eight to 10 months, they're going to be pulling building permits down there. And we have a principal engineer we've been trying to fill for eight months, but you can't, we get like one or two applicants at a time. We hired an assistant building official, Adrian, who I think is a great add. Victor was added not really because of the growth, but for code compliance, to have a code compliance manager. And he's knocking it out of the park. And of course Sydney, we all know how outstanding Sydney is, and Kelsey and Nick, and. So we've added another permit tech upfront, so we have three permit techs. We did add another senior code officer. We may be moving the court compliance team over where, you know, if you want to work off your traffic ticket, that might come over to the department, because we really haven't had those work crews out doing some projects since COVID. And so the new judge is not interested in running that program, so we're going to move the position over and they can work the, the, people are working off their tickets, the, the court workers, and in the afternoon, they can do code enforcement. We have a, a planning tech we're trying to hire, an engineering tech, and a principal engineer. I think that gets up to 34. So, but I think again, all these infill projects are happening, it's got, you know, we're, we're maintaining it, but there's a, it just keeps coming. So again, I think what's happened is all the land really between, you know, here in the 202, it's kind of finally filled up. All the, all the parcels that kind of were lost during the last recession, over the last five years, you drive down University, Superstition, you see all the, that land, all that is really, we're feeling the pressure out here. So even though there's, you know, 50,000 units planned in Buckeye for the southeast area, all these infill sites, we're getting constant meetings and barrages about infill. So, so I don't know if we have enough for a meeting next, or in two weeks, but I had thought, I, I think in-house, just know that we're working on this RFP for the zoning code, that's kind of, then you'll, you'll be heavily involved in that once the project starts and you get some text to, to work on.
Okay, well, again, Larry, maybe on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Commission, we do want to extend our deepest thanks and appreciation for your service to the city, to this community, and your helping us through all of this. So we thank you for that and wish you the best, and it is retirement, I believe, is that correct?
Pretty much, I think, because I'm going to find something to do. Already volunteering at the marathon, like I always do, and a few things like that, so.
Again, we, we are grateful for all of your service to this community, so.
Okay, I'm happy to have been here, really.
You can move AJ and run on the commission.
I don't know, I might help on the CDC and go clean up some yards or something, you know? That could, that could work. But thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, so selection of meeting dates, times, locations, and purpose, do I have a motion?
Chair, I moved that the Planning and Zoning Commission hold a regular meeting on February 22nd, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard. In the event there are no items to be brought forward to the commission, these meeting, this meeting may be canceled. Notification of cancellation properly posted and the commission notified by staff.
Very good, thank you. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Very good, have a second, roll call, Rudy?
Commissioner Cross?
Yes.
Commissioner Gage?
Yes.
Commissioner Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Begum?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantwell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hanchi?
Yes.
Chairman Heck?
Yes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Very good, thank you. Motion is passed and meeting adjourned. Thank you.